I'd like to call the Monday, October 7, 2024 Oakwood City Council meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me with the pledge to the flag?
Pledge of the flag to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please, Lori?
Mayor Duncan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mrs. Turbin?
Here.
Mrs. Jackson?
Here.
And may I have a report of the minutes of our September 16 regular session, work session, and executive session, Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, Mayor, and I've read the minutes for the meetings that you cited. Upon review, I found them to be complete and correct, and I move that we accept the minutes as written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so ordered. This is an exciting night for the city of Oakwood. We are going to promote a new public safety officer to the position of lieutenant, and it is Chris Sloan. What we're going to do is, I want to also acknowledge and introduce Chris's wife, Brandy, is here. There she is, row three, and they have two children, Julia and Kale, they're back there. Come on, raise your hand higher. Okay, thank you. And then Brandy's parents are also here, Larry and Diane Harris, and they're back there as well. You've got all of row three, congratulations. And then also, Chris's brother, Justin Sloan, is also here, and he is also a public safety lieutenant with the city of Oakwood. There you are, where are you? He's hiding back there, there we go. So what we're going to do, I'm going to come down in front of you if Chris and his wife and children would like to join us, and even in-laws, if you want to come down. Chief Hill wants to say a few words about Chris, and then I will administer the oath of office.
Lieutenant Chris Sloan began his public safety career with the Fairborn Fire Department, where he served for 12 years as a full-time firefighter and paramedic. During his time at Fairborn, Chris served in the fire department in many various capacities. However, in 2013, Chris made the decision to not only leave the city of Fairborn, but he also left the fire service entirely and became a full-time police officer with the city of Mason. During his time at Mason, Chris became a certified motor officer. What does that mean? He rode a motorcycle every day for a living. He was an accident reconstructionist. He was a field training officer and also a firearms instructor. In late 2018, Chris made the decision to leave the city of Mason and join the Oakwood Public Safety Department in early 2019. I said this on the day Chris was hired in 2019. Chris is truly the most experienced public safety applicant we've ever had in the history of our department, possessing over 18 years of full-time public safety experience, and he's one of a few officers that we currently have that not only served as a full-time firefighter, but also as a full-time police officer prior to getting hired at the city of Oakwood. Given Chris's background, Chris adapted quickly to the safety department, has become highly productive, and has served as one of our main field training officers for the last several years. Chris possesses all the qualities necessary to inspire, influence, motivate, develop, and lead others. Chris is a proud husband to his wife, Brandy, and his two children, Julia and Kale. I've lived your lacrosse experiences for the last several years. Please know your father's proud of what you guys have accomplished. Chris is a graduate of Tecumseh High School and possesses associate's degrees from Sinclair Community College, not only in criminal justice, but also EMS and fire science. Chris's promotion today embodies his hard work and his dedication he has demonstrated throughout his career, and I look forward to working closely with Chris and watching him grow further as a leader within the organization. I would be remiss to say, this is a great evening for the Sloan family. I know tonight's about Chris, but Justin, his brother, who serves as one of our lieutenant, very proud night for two brothers tonight, so congrats to the both of you, and please join me in welcoming Lieutenant Sloan as a newly promoted lieutenant.
So if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Ohio, and I will obey the laws thereof, and that I will, in all respects, uphold the provisions and enforce and uphold the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of this city, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of public safety lieutenant upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations. And now Brandy is going to give you your lieutenant badge. It is now time for our visitors' portion. If anybody here wishes to address council, we would invite you to come down to the podium here in front and state your name and address for the record, and we would welcome you. Who wants to talk first? Must be a lot of, you know, must be a lot of complaints from citizens tonight, okay. Welcome.
My name is Tom Hardy, and I have been a citizen of Oakwood for over two decades, and in that time, I've never made a complaint, so I thought I would take this opportunity, since Norv was leaving, to voice my feelings about the city of Oakwood. Over 20 years ago, we were moving here and got a welcome packet from you. We opened the welcome packet, and there on the brochure was a smiling husband, a smiling wife, and two smiling children riding their bikes down the sidewalk. And my son looked at me and said, "Where are we moving, Niceville?" And it turns out, it was Niceville, and even better. Oakwood is an anachronism. There aren't places like this anymore, which are safe, where the schools are excellent, and where people have a real sense of community. There are a lot of reasons for that, not the least of which is the service of the members of the council, and in particular, of our retiring city manager. Norv is a graduate of the United States Military Academy and embodies the values of duty, honor, and country, common to all graduates from that great institution. In his over 30 years here as a city manager, he has led with impeccable integrity, and that really is Norv's hallmark. Now, he faces a daunting challenge come the 1st of November, when he's going to be retired, but I've completed my first year of retirement, and I'm going to be his consultant for the first year. So don't worry, Norv, thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. We'll waive the three-minute rule, so all you guys can, you know, be like Norv and just talk until cows come home. Who else would like to address council? Big chance, guys. Okay, all right, thank you very much, Dr. Hardy, that was a very genuine tribute to Norv. I do want to announce that on Thursday, November 7, we're going to have an open house at the Oakwood Community Center for people from all over the area, because there's people all over the area that want to give their best wishes to Norv, and it'll be from, I think, 4:00 to 7:00, and we'll have a brief presentation celebrating Norv's career around 5:30. So I'm still working on that program, so I'll have that prepared by November 7, and you all are invited, and we may probably even put a little blurb in the Oakwood Register announcing this, if he will print it. So that concludes our visitors' portion of the meeting this evening. We'll now go straight to legislation, and Councilmember Jackson has a resolution in public hearing.
I do, Mayor. I have a resolution to grant approval of an amendment to the approved master plan for the Sugar Creek and Point Oakwood development affecting the site located at One Russell Place. This resolution would amend the Sugar Camp Point Oakwood Master Plan to allow for the construction of a pickleball court at the Russell Total Wealth and Wellness Building located at One Russell Place. This development is in the multi-use special planning zoning district. This is a special zoning district that was created in the waning years of NCR's ownership of the Sugar Camp property, written to maximize local control over the development of the site. Regulations for the district are sparse but strict, requiring almost all development to be done via public hearings and special use permit. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this plan amendment on September 4th, 2024. By a vote of four to zero, with one member recusing himself, the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval with certain conditions. These conditions are as follows. First, the hours of operation would be limited to 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Second, the applicant must work with the city staff to develop a lighting plan that ensures lighting is no taller than 12 feet and timer controlled. And three, use would be restricted to Russell Total Wealth and Wellness employees, clients, and prospective clients. The matter is now before council on that recommendation, and tonight, we will hold our own public hearing on the amendment. I am introducing this as a resolution to approve based on the recommendations of the Planning Commission. However, council is required to hold a public hearing on this proposal and has not prejudged the matter. At the conclusion of the hearing, we may vote to approve the application in its entirety, approve it with conditions, or deny it altogether. If council decides to approve as recommended by the Planning Commission, we will adopt this resolution as is. If we decide to adopt the recommendation with modifications or additional conditions imposed by council, there is space provided on the document to write them into. In the event that we deny the application altogether or otherwise depart from the Planning Commission's recommendation, I will withdraw this resolution as written and ask the law director to prepare legislation consistent with council's decision to be adopted at our next regular meeting in November. With that, as a formality, before we begin our public hearing, I move council, adopt this resolution, and ask for a second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Your Honor, in advance of that, I will, given that I live across the street from this particular development, I was also the recusal in the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
I'll leave the dais and return when you're finished.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Byington, for that clarification. As Councilmember Jackson just described, we have a public hearing for Sugar Camp Amendment. That's required under our zoning code. The public hearing on this pickleball court amendment in September, and they've recommended approval with few conditions, as Councilmember Jackson just described. Under our zoning code, we're required to hold our own hearing tonight before making a final decision. Before we begin, I'd like to ask our law director to swear in those who wish to testify tonight, and you can stand at your seat if you wish to testify, and he will swear everyone in en masse. With that, you want to go ahead and do that now?
Sure. Anyone who plans to testify, please stand, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in any testimony before council tonight? Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, Mr. Kroger, would you please address, come to council and present your staff report?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Jackson did a wonderful job. I don't know if I can add a lot to my staff report here. Again, the applicant is John Koppelcheck on behalf of RCR Holdings, which is Russell Total Wealth and Wellness. Location again is One Russell Place, is located in the multi-use special planning district, and again, to amend the Sugar Camp Master Plan, I'm sorry, to amend the Sugar Camp Point Oakwood Master Plan for the installation of a sports court, pickleball, to the existing The pickleball court will be located on the south side of the property in between the existing building and West Shance Avenue. The pickleball court will be located approximately 76 feet from the public right-of-way on West Shance and 138 feet from the east property line boarding the homes in Point Oakwood. Down toward, I know it's a little difficult to see, down towards the bottom of your screen, that's West Shance Avenue, here, and then you have the homes to the right-hand side, these are the homes bordering the lots at Point Oakwood, and the big yellow area there indicates the pickleball court. The proposed pickleball court will be roughly 880 square feet, which is standard pickleball court size. However, the overall surface will be 1,800 square feet to allow for base and sidelines. There will be an installation of a 10-foot chain-link fence that will enclose the court, and per our code, chain-link fences are permitted up to 15 feet in height around all or part of a tennis court on either public or private land. This is just an artist's rendering of what the fence would look like. You see a big gaping, open section here. That will not be so on the actual court. There will just be a single entrance and exit gate or door there for the pickleball court. The pickleball court will feature lighting to illuminate the court. The lighting will be mounted on four poles located within the fencing surrounding the pickleball court. Again, the red arrows here on your screen indicate an artist's rendering of those lights. The proposed pickleball court will be heavily screened with vegetation to obstruct the view from the neighboring businesses and residential properties. This is the landscaping plan. It was reviewed and approved by the Leisure Services Director, Carol Collins. Again, you can see here, kind of at the top of your screen, the pickleball court with vegetation surrounding almost the entirety of the court, with the exception of the entrance and exit there. There will be additional large-scale trees planted around the perimeter as well. Again, on September 4th of this year, the Planning Commission recommended approval to city council by a vote of four to zero, with one member recusing himself, to alter or change the Sugar Camp Point Oakwood Master Plan for the installation of a pickleball court at Russell Place. Again, Planning Commission came up with three conditions. Again, those are, the hours of operation are from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The applicant must work with city staff to develop a lighting plan to ensure that lights are installed no higher than 12 feet, and to look into using a timer for the lights. And lastly, here, the applicant must restrict the use of the pickleball court to Russell Wealth employees, existing clients, and potential clients. That is all I have at this time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does council have any questions?
Yeah, I do. Ethan, do you know the lights themselves? You said four corners, I think you said, four corners, will these be mounted? Will they be directed in, or are they going to be more rounded, you know, which could illuminate on the outside?
The applicant is working with city staff to develop a final lighting plan, but my understanding is the lighting will be shown down on the court itself to minimize light spill to the surrounding properties.
Right. That's what I'm thinking about. I mean, it seems obvious to point them in, but they could also get a decorative that illuminates around it, and I just want to make sure that they're pointing in.
I don't believe that there's any plan for decorative lighting.
Okay. It would be directing towards the court for obvious reasons.
That's correct.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for Ethan? All right. Thank you for your report. At this time, we'll open the public hearing for anyone who wishes to speak on behalf of the applicant. Does anyone, if you wish to come down, if you could please state your name and address for the record, we welcome you.
I'm Tim Parker. I'm here on behalf of Synergy, I'm sorry, on Russell Total Wealth, representing Synergy as well. I don't have much more to add at this time. I believe Mr. Kroger presented all the, provided an excellent summary of the project, including all the key details that presented to Planning Commission, along with their recommendation for approval. I do want to answer your question about lighting. We did provide a lighting plan, for a metric plan, and the lighting does point down into the pickleball court with no spillage of lighting. And I'm just here to answer any other questions that you may, you all may have at this time.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for him at this time? We can, if we have questions going forward, you're welcome, we'll bring you back up.
Sure, happy to address any of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else in favor of this project that wishes to testify? Seeing none, we'll now go to anyone who wishes to speak against this application. We have one here. If you'd come down and state your name and address for the record, we welcome you as well.
Dr. Gregory Seaman, 151 Point Oakwood Way.
Okay.
Good evening, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Again, I'm Dr. Gregory Seaman. I'm a professor at Wright State University and a trauma surgeon at Miami Valley Hospital. I rise on behalf of the Point Oakwood Homeowners Association, in which I currently serve as vice president and secretary. Our HOA is both intrigued and concerned about Russell Wealth Management's proposal to construct a pickleball court on their commercial property very close proximity to most of our homeowners' residencies. City council is likely aware that the sport of pickleball is rapidly growing in popularity in the U.S. As the sport has grown, so have concerns from those living near pickleball courts over noise pollution. The impact of pickleball on a hard racket causes a sharp-popping sound that can be heard hundreds of feet from the courts, much more than the impact of a tennis ball on a tennis racket. Poor facility placement, unsatisfactory noise mitigation efforts, and inadequate city ordinances have led to disgruntled homeowners, decreased property values, and extensive legal fights. I can cite numerous news articles to this effect, if you so wish. So I bring before council a noise assessment that was commissioned in 2023 by the city of Centennial, Colorado, and I would ask this be entered into the record. This assessment contains an in-depth analysis of the noise pollution created by pickleball courts and has many conclusions in regards to best practices in noise assessment and regulation by cities, the characteristics of a pickleball sound, and why it is so annoying to people that live nearby, the noise impact assessment of pickleball, noise abatement plannings, as well as site planning. I specifically want to call these specific guidelines from the report in regards to site planning. I'm reading directly from the report. Courts located within 350 feet of residential properties in most cases require noise abatement. Pickleball court sites within 500 to 600 feet of noise-sensitive areas should be reviewed by a qualified acoustical engineer in site selection phase of the project. In the case that the ground between the pickleball courts and the receiving property is water, this distance may extend 800 to 1,000 feet in some cases. Courts located within 150 feet of homes require careful and often extensive noise abatement design to avoid complaints. Placing open-air pickleball courts within 100 feet of residential properties is not recommended. Following this report, the city council of Centennial, Colorado enacted the following city ordinances. Number one, they did not require a permit for any people within 600 feet of a residential property. Number two, they defined measurements as taken from the closest exterior court line of the pickleball court to the property line of the closest residential zone property. Third, and probably most importantly, they legislated no pickleball court is allowed within 250 feet of a residential property. Four, for any permanent application within 250 feet to 600 feet, the applicant must provide a noise impact assessment from a qualified engineer. Number six, for mitigation design during use of the courts, noise level cannot exceed 47 decibels of the residential property line. Noise assessments are made by a technique called adjust sound exposure level, defined by the American Standards Institute. Any mitigation recommended by the assessment must be installed. Noise barrier height is a minimum of 10 feet. Finally, issuance of a permit does not, in fact, comply with other ordinances, including noise and nuisance laws. Specifically in regard to Point Oakwood, we have some specific concerns. Our community has already experienced significant increase in noise pollution due to the construction of Lane Stadium in 2017. Unique topography of Point Oakwood causes a tunnel effect, making sporting events very loud inside my home and the rest of us that are along the hillside of Point Oakwood. Furthermore, we've had an increase in traffic significantly since construction of Lane Stadium. We were assured by council that visitors to the property would use far hills, but we see many, many people that come through Point Oakwood when accessing that property. The pickleball court would add to an already high level of noise and potentially could affect our home values down the road. I appreciate in this document that there's consideration of restricting hours to 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., but that is not satisfactory to some people within our community, as some people work from home, and people such as myself work very odd hours, and I'm often sleeping during the day. Understanding these concerns, the Point Oakwood Homeowners Association respectfully requests that council takes no further action towards approval of this proposal. At a minimum, if council wishes to proceed with exploring this project, we recommend a noise impact study by an outside firm acceptable to the HOA. We would also ask that council strongly consider why we need such a facility on a piece of private commercial property within our city. We'd ask council to consider what benefits exist for Oakwood residents and weigh that against a potential negative impact on the Point Oakwood community. And I also have the ordinances that were enacted by the city of Centennial, Colorado following that report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. In the Colorado situation, was it one pickleball court, or were there multiple?
I believe there are multiple in that situation.
So that would make a difference, correct?
I'm not an acoustical engineer, so I can't make that assessment, but logically, I would think so.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I have a couple. Did your association attend the Planning Commission meeting when this was?
We received a notice about the meeting and also that it was canceled, so I would love to see the minutes from that meeting.
Okay. Do you know that issue?
There was, I know that, I don't know the dates offhand. The initial meeting, when it was first scheduled, was rescinded. The applicant pulled the application temporarily while they were adjusting something, and then it was put back on. There should have been a second notice for the second hearing.
Does anyone from our community receive a second notice? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Has that report been submitted to the Plan Commission? I'm assuming no.
No, again, we weren't aware of an opportunity prior to this.
Okay, and can you give that to our clerk of council?
I could provide it electronically, like, as well.
Okay, you have a copy for you?
Yes.
That's not your only copy, okay? And do you know if landscaping and screening get addressed in that report?
Extensively, it's 77 pages, it's quite impressive.
Okay, all right, very good.
But I would ask that council consider all these recommendations, and hopefully, Commission One, that can specifically address the unique topography of our area.
Okay. And does that report address topography? I know they had different, different square footages. Do we, I'm trying to remember, this might be a question for Ethan, do we know how close this pickleball court is to the closest homes in Point Oakwood?
It said 138 feet.
Okay, I missed that.
The city council elected 250 feet to be the absolute minimum for residential property. property line.
Okay, all right, if you could present that to her, I would appreciate it. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Please come down and address counsel, state your name and address for the record, and we welcome you as well.
Hi, I'm Pobbo Hannan. I live at 204 Point Oakwood Way. I'm the treasurer for the Point Oakwood condo association. We entered into a legal agreement with the city, the Oakwood Investment Group, and Hills So part of that agreement was that, that there was restricted use of that property on top of the hill, and it was to build an office building. And I don't believe there's any stipulation in that agreement that it would allow for the building of a recreational outdoor facility. I guess maybe you guys have a better idea. I know you talked about the zoning, but I think this legal agreement may be outside the zoning agreement. That's all I, I thought it, that's something you guys should consider.
Okay. I will, I was, I was around when that happened, so I don't believe, I think the agreement between the three parties was probably silent as to that. Not that you could do it or you couldn't do it, but I think it was, the agreement was silent. We'll take a look at that as well.
Okay. Your honor, it did speak to the construction of an office building, which is what happened on this parcel.
That's correct.
From a zoning standpoint, what's, what the applicant is proposing here would be an accessory use that's not inconsistent with the use of that parcel as an office building parcel. So the agreement was really silent as to accessory uses that might be permitted with that. This really is not addressed by that agreement.
That's what, that was my recollection as well. Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions for this man? Okay, thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to address counsel that's in opposition to this application?
Garrett Orleski, 205 Point Oakwood Way. So just to kind of piggyback on Dr. Seaman's testimony, so our primary concern along with the noise is the increased water runoff that the, now this new flat surface is going to cause, which is going to just exacerbate the drainage issues that we're already having down there. We've expressed concerns to the developer, also to the city in the past, and it's just kind of not, nothing has done, been done with it. But, so just in closing, like I said, our main concern, my wife's and I, is the drainage. So if this, if it does proceed, which also is a little bit disappointing that it sounds like it already is, and, you know, as we said, we never received any type of notice, we would suggest that a water study be done, along with a noise study be done, because it just seems that, you know, unfortunately, us down there in the Point Oakwood, despite paying the same taxes, we're just kind of overlooked continuously in comparison to the old Oakwood. So that would be what I would suggest and hope for.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for him? Okay.
If I may, sir, there was a drainage study that was completed and reviewed by the city engineer. That was in the, in the packet that you should have received, and I'm happy to share that with you after the meeting.
Was there a noise study done?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Well, let's talk about the water study. So you're saying it was okay, it was approved?
It was reviewed and approved by our city, our city engineer.
Are there water problems down there now?
I would have to defer to the residents. I'm not intimately aware of.
Okay.
Could we have the doctor come back up? And he's nodding his head about water problems. You have a lot of skills.
Yeah, there's significant water drainage issues in our community. I forget the home at the very end that was owned by Wendy and Vince Lewis and sold. The foundation actually had shifted several feet, and they actually sued the developer and were able to sell, they required to buy the home back. And the current owners have put significant money into having to basically repour a foundation. The new home that's down around the corner, the one as you're going down to Lane Stadium, right on the corner, that's owned by Mr. DeVall, that home has significant foundation issues because of the water runoff down the hill. I personally have upgraded the French drainage system in my property to help accommodate. When I first moved there, literally after a rainstorm, there was a river running down the river in my backyard. I could have gotten in a raft and gone down. So all of us have had to significantly upgrade the drainage system. And I think what Garrett's expressing is that with the flat surface, we hope there's some mitigation efforts to get those into the correct drainage systems so that that runoff does not further come down the slope at the back of our homes.
So, so the drainage issues are at the bottom of the hill as opposed to the top of the hill?
It's the entire hill. It basically starts up on Shance and everything just runs down the hill. The path of least resistance seems to be the back of those of us who live on the hillside. It backs up into Shure Camp, and that's where I said we had that river coming down at some point. So we've done a lot of upgrades to try to divert the water flow into some already existing systems. But even if you stand at the very bottom, closest to Lane Stadium, at the house that's next to the apartment development, after a big rain, you'll see a river running down the hillside into the drainage system right there. So it's still an issue.
Okay, what I'm more, which is obvious in the fact that water, obviously, it's very simple. My concern is not that any house is more important than others, but I'm concerned more about the homes at the top of the hill, maybe. I'm not sure, you guys rattled off your addresses, I apologize, I don't know the numbers of which house, but obviously, I know the Lewis's, I knew about that. Now, I thought that was foundation from when they built it, and they built up the hill, and they didn't build it properly. Now, I'm sure water had something to do with it, I understand that. I'm more concerned about if water's getting in the homes at the top that are closer to Shance. Or is there water going in those homes right now?
Is it like into a basement?
Yes.
Something like that? I'm not sure.
Is that where Garrett lives?
Could you come back up and speak in the microphone so the folks that are watching us at home can hear us?
Unfortunately, our neighbors are not here tonight, but they, they, from our understanding, they had originally built into the flooring, the heated, and because of the water seepage, it destroyed that. And so they had to have, we had French drains put into, they had French, I don't know if they had French drains, but they had to have, at their expense, a, between our house and their house, a drainage that leads out to a drain in between our homes. But in between our home and the home further up, there's no drain, and that's, it's just, it's like a swamp.
Does that drain connect to our storm system?
It does not, not between our house and Kevin Jones, our neighbor.
Okay, all right.
So that, okay, that's, is this a city problem? Are we aware of nor, and the fact that with the water, because this is, you know, we might need to address that in general.
This is the first I've heard about what's being spoken.
Right, I didn't know anything about it either.
Yeah.
And trust me, I'm an insurance agent, so I'm very concerned about your water problems, okay? I mean, I'm not saying it's, you know, make a determination entirely on this whole application, but I'm just in general asking while you're here about water problems, because also we need to look into who's responsible for that, and the fact that hills and, you know, we can get into that later, but I just want to know where the, you know, I have water in my house too, but I don't live below a hill. So I'm just curious, that's why I'm asking the questions about the water.
No, it's a concern, it, it, long-term.
Yeah.
In insurance, you know, long-term, we are always continuously concerned about, you know.
Right. And the way it's built, I totally understand water's going to be rushing down in the street that goes to Lane Stadium, and I mean, I see that, that's going to happen. I'm more concerned about the top of the hill, because that's where it's going to start.
Right.
If there's water issues there, then that needs to be looked into. Okay.
Those properties that are for sale on Shance, I believe, some of them are not suitable for building with my first tenant.
There's one lot for sale, I believe.
There are two?
Oh, two lots for sale. Yeah, there's two lots for sale, and they're, they're buildable. The two on Shance themselves, yeah, they're buildable, we just don't have any buyers yet. Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address counsel that's in the, that's opposed to this? Please come down, state your name and address for the record, and we welcome you as well.
My name is Hamidzul Bannon. I live at 225 Point Oakwood Way. It's probably the second closest home to this pickleball court.
Excuse me, could you get closer to the microphone?
Sure.
Thank you.
And I'm the president of the HOA. I had one thing I wanted to say, but prior to that, when you said about the water problem, since I'm pretty much at the top of the hill, I once had a problem with water coming into my basement, so I had to bring some people to fix it. And in that process, we, it was under the soil, we were able to unearth a French drain that was next to our, between us and our neighbor. So it was, it is there, but not necessarily all the water goes in to that. It just flows pretty much everywhere. So water problem could be an issue. The other thing I wanted to talk about was the definition of potential clients. So you said the current employees, clients, and potential clients can use this court. My question is, what is the definition of the potential clients? Anybody could go play there and say, I'm a potential client, I'm gonna do business with them next week, next month, next year. What is the definition of potential client? Because then the court can potentially be used all the time by potential clients, for which we have no definition.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Thank you for your comments. And we have one more that's, we should speak in opposition. Welcome to you as well. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Marietta Orelowski, and I live at 205 Point Oakwood Way. And I'd like to circle back to what Dr. Harding started this session with, and it's about the quality of life for the residents in the city of Oakwood. And my husband and I have lived at Point Oakwood Way for, we're going on six years. We moved from Lincoln Park Boulevard in Kettering, and I am just concerned that that cute little neighborhood that we moved into just doesn't get the quality of life attention that other residents do in the city of Oakwood. We, there have, and I'm not going to rehash the history, there have been lawsuits, there have been disagreements, and it just seems so counter approach to what the city has set forth, and we just ask for the same respect that you offer to yourselves and to the other city residents. How many of you would like a pickleball court in your backyard? We are uphill like my other neighbors. You know, we're all for recreation and things like that, but please just consider us as residents in this city that prides itself in quality of life, and we understand that there's a balance. You know, I serve on the Board of Health for Public Health Day in Montgomery County, and, I mean, I understand the balance, but this city has seemed to prioritize the quality of life of residents, and we do not feel like we are getting that in this consideration. So thank you for your consideration, and please look at it from that perspective.
Thank you. Any questions? Anyone else in, opposed to this application? This is your chance to come forward. I think we've got most of you. I see a few in the back, okay. I'd like to bring the applicant that's in favor of this to come back and answer a couple of questions. Is that okay? I'm sorry, have, yes, yes, no, you or your partner, either, either one or both would be fine.
My name is John Kopplecheck with the applicant. I'm happy to address some comments and.
Yes, okay. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, sir. I guess I want to start with saying that the whole application was, was made with the neighbors in mind. We did take our time. We even took our time and rescinded because we did not yet get the drainage study back, which is, which is why we delayed it a month to make sure that the city engineer did sign off on making sure that there was no negative impact to any surrounding neighbors for the proposed project. We looked at the sighting of the pickleball court, whether it's located on the north side of the property, whether it's located on the south side of the property. Due to topography, we could not do the north side, and so we did the south side of the property and tried to keep the distance as far as possible from the neighboring properties as we achieved about 138 feet, obviously heading to the east. Then we also tried to probably maybe exceed the, the city requirements when it comes to screening, in that we surrounded the entire property with arbor vida that has, has no rule pass through, and then surrounded the arbor vida trees with spruce trees themselves. So really two layers of screening to hopefully not just have an open-air court. And then the, the last item that we really took into account was the limited activity. And I do understand what is a potential client for Russell Wealth, and Russell Wealth, they do have, Russell Wealth and Wellness is their name. They do try to take a holistic approach to their services so that people not only can achieve a certain lifestyle, but then be able to enjoy it on the back end. So their goal is to allow for people to see that, to be able to sell that approach so that they can have their clients come in the door. So it is not meant to have a friend that simply says that we want to come play, it is truly to try to provide those people with a holistic approach to, to their services. So really, everything that they, that they did, and we all kind of planned together, was trying to take into account the neighbors as we were reciting this and designing it. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that you all may have.
Any questions?
Was enclosed structure ever discussed?
It was never discussed, no, sir.
Mr. Jackson, what would be the height allowance on a enclosed structure, or at least a three-sided structure? If you know what I'm picturing, possibly a gazebo type, but more of a shelter, but it would have sides on it? You know what our height requirement is there off the top of your head?
I believe it's, under the zone, because an accessory structure would be 12 feet, unless it were, unless there was somebody to characterize as a garage, and it could be 18 feet, but it's fairly low.
So it's not, it's not going to work, right? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Are, are the court times scheduled, or can people just show up?
Great question. So each person, it's going to be a locked court, locked in the sense of it's going to be secured. So each person's going to have to go to the front desk of Russell Wealth to get access to the court. So it will all be scheduled. You cannot just come in and anybody come and play, so it will all be monitored by an employee of Russell Wealth.
Did you commission the drainage study, or did the city commission that?
It was an approval process that was required through the city before we could even really be in front. Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. And then I guess the question that I have is, if, if the folks opposed to this application had the opportunity to review the drainage study, would you have any opposition to that?
No, I'm.
The city approved it, so no, I, I wouldn't have an issue with anybody having that.
I'm trying, I'm thinking, one of my, one of my, I don't, I don't have as much problem with the noise issue due to the screening. I, I've, I've read all the Wall Street Journal articles about the pros and cons of pickleball. I choose not to play either one, that or tennis, but I am a little, I am a little concerned about the drainage issue, but I know that the drainage issue isn't necessarily, just because you're higher up, you know, you're at the top of the hill. I am, I am, I am concerned about these folks saying that they did not receive notice. I, I would like to consider perhaps that we get to the bottom of that and make sure we follow our processes. If, they said they received notice at the initial hearing, that appears to have been rescinded, and I want to make sure that we didn't have a faux pas and not send out a revised notice at the meeting, because my understanding was, no one came to the Planning Commission meeting in opposition. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay. But I mean, not only were they not in opposition, they weren't even there. Right? Okay.
And to be clear, we had, we had one person at the Planning Commission, well, Councilmember Bynum, who was recused and sat as an audience member. He raised a question as to whether notice had been properly sent out, because he did not recall receiving. not recall receiving them.
Okay.
The case file that we have here at the city does include a notice. We do not have a certificate of mailing that verifies whether in fact it was sent out, and typically we would not have one. There's nothing that appears out of order. But because he raised the question as to whether, whether he received it or not, it's possible that it was not sent, and we would acknowledge that possibility. It's part of the reason why tonight's hearing is critically important, and that notice was sent out for this, is to ensure for due process purposes that everyone has had notice and an opportunity to be heard. And we verified, double, triple-checked that it went out prior to tonight's hearing.
All right.
The first notice or the second notice?
The notice for tonight's hearing.
The notice for tonight's hearing.
We verified that tonight's notice went out.
Oh, okay.
So in case anyone had missed an opportunity to be heard at the planning commission level, they still have an opportunity to come here before council and be heard.
Well, obviously, you must have gotten the notice for tonight's hearing, because that's why you're all here. But perhaps you didn't, you're swearing under oath that you didn't get the second notice of the planning commission. Am I correct in understanding that? Okay.
Yes, and I, that concerned me from...
I asked Vice Mayor Byington, but I'm not allowed to.
Yeah. That concerned me from the beginning when I heard that, and I'm gonna make a motion that we table this to allow more research done on noise and water, and I don't like the fact that they didn't receive the second for the planning commission, because I think all this should have been done at the planning commission first and then brought to us. It's personal opinion, so, and I gotta go on faith that they did not receive it, so...
Okay. And again, the question about the, what am I trying to say here?
Drainage.
The sound, the sound study.
Sound abatement.
That, that there was not one done. I'm not certain that I care so much about a sound abatement study in Colorado. I don't, do you know what a sound, how long a sound abatement study would take, or what it would cost you?
We have never done one, so I'm not positive.
Okay. And nor have we, I don't believe, in any other issue.
We haven't had many complaints at, you know, our pickleball courts. I mean, I don't know of any. I mean, I'm not, I'm not involved in every complaint, but I don't, I haven't heard of many complaints at Corrigan.
Well, I haven't received a single one.
Yeah, no complaints.
Unfortunately Park.
Noise, yeah, then Orchardly Park.
And we have two courts there, I believe. We have two.
And there, I'm gonna say 30 feet to a house possibly, if that.
I think they would be...
Maybe 20, yeah.
Definitely could be for some of the folks that live on Orchardly.
Okay, all right. Well, I still would like to table it, though, in the fact that there was not a second notice received by any of the individuals at this property. I just think, and let them, and I like the idea of them looking at the water.
The drainage study.
The drainage study.
You mean, the folks that are opposed?
Yes.
Who's the person in charge of the Homeowners Association? Could you come back up? Thank you for your, do you have anything else? First of all, do you have anything else you'd like to say?
Mayor, I have one, I have one question.
Oh, okay.
If I'm correct, I heard earlier this evening that you have some wellness, a wellness facility within your building now?
I do not want to portray that it's my building, so we, we manage the building for them, but I am not Russell Wealth. But there, there is a wellness component as part of what the services that they do provide on the inside of the building. Yes, ma'am.
Can you describe how well-used that facility is?
I am not aware. I'm sorry.
Does your partner know the answer to that?
I doubt that he knows either.
My understanding was they, they did things of, you know, floor exercise, yoga, those types of things. I don't think it rises to the level of a gymnasium.
No, no, not, not gymnasium. You know, they have, they have a kitchen to talk about the holistic approach of eating and cooking. They do also have yoga and that type of fitness. There's, from my knowledge, not a full gym, not like if you were to go to the YMCA. It's not, it's not that same type of facility, but it is their approach to the wellness.
Did they ever make any kind of an estimate about the number of clients that might use the pickleball court?
They have not, no. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, one more, go ahead.
One question, as we clarify maybe the reason for the tabling, which I am fine with, not that I have to be, but is it just to review the drainage study? Or what are, what would be the conditions of tabling? I guess it's just a question that I'll have to answer.
The three conditions?
No, no. He's talking about why we've been tabled tonight.
I believe that, I think, I don't, I'm speaking for myself, but I, and we'll get to the end, bottom of this, but I believe that I would like to make sure that due process was followed with the residents in the area to make sure that they got, we're pretty sure they got notice of the first planning commission meeting. What appears to be in dispute is they didn't get notice of the second planning commission meeting, which would have maybe identified these issues, and they clearly got notice of this meeting. So I want to determine that, make sure that part of the due process worked. The drainage issue, I think, I would just like to, you know, we, the city, I think, reviewed and approved the drainage issue. I feel like we may want to share, I think, probably do want to share that with the residents. I, I'm not prepared to pay for a second drainage issue if the residents don't like the drainage issue that was prepared by the city staff, or, you know, we hired experts, I think, to do that drainage issue, correct? Oh, you did that, so, you know, if they don't like your drainage study, if they want to do their own drainage study, that's on them, in my opinion. I'm just speaking for myself. But I'd like them to at least look at it and say, "Okay, well, maybe we're just stuck with having French drains in the back, in our backyards, and that's not really your all's responsibility." And then the third thing on, I'd like to, I don't know if I want to read this or not. I might read this 79-page document from Colorado, but I don't have much of a life, you know, I'm retired. But I would, I would also like to perhaps, you know, investigate at the city level, what would a sound mitigation document even look like? And A, how long would it take? And B, how much would it cost? That's, that's sort of where I'm coming from. I don't know about the rest of you.
I'm on the same page.
Okay. Could we have the, okay, thank you. Could, could we have that homeowner's person that's sitting in the back come up? I'd be interested in your opinion of if we, if we end up doing a noise mitigation study, are you amenable to reviewing that? And as far as the drainage issue, if you don't like the drainage issue that we have already prepared, are you willing to, you know, come up with your own drainage issue, drainage study? Or is that something you have to go back to your board on?
We can consider that, yes.
You can consider that? Okay, all right. I guess the, in my mind, the question would be, are we talking about 30 days or 60 days to, would we, if, in my mind, if we did not give notice of the second meeting, I think we sort of need to start over. I don't know if you agree with that from a legal standpoint.
Start over meaning you wanted to go back to the planning commission for review?
That's sort of, that's sort of what I'm thinking.
You can direct that.
I don't know, that's up to the rest of you all.
It would have to come to us eventually anyway, wouldn't it?
It's gonna come to council eventually.
Yeah, look, you know me, I don't like dragging things out. I'd rather get it resolved tonight, but I don't, I need more time on this. I don't think we need to go back to planning commission.
Do you think that we need, do you think that we need to review the drainage issue, or be, A, or A and B, you know, go with a sound?
Noise mitigation.
The noise, the noise issue.
I need more, no, there's no answer of what we need to do.
Okay. Do you want to just?
Just table it.
You just want to table it?
And I'm good for November.
I think it does need to go back to the planning commission.
I agree. I think we do it in the proper way it should have been done.
Okay. Well, I have spent more time as your mayor on Sugar Camp than any other single position in my, you know, 15 years as mayor. So 60 days compared to 30 days doesn't bother me one bit. I guess I, can we shoot for 60 days and get, and get that all, and maybe get these three questions answered? I think there's three questions. There's drainage, there's sound, and there's due process.
Well, as to the due process question, I think, I think we have to just assume that that, that notice of the second hearing did not get sent.
Did not happen.
That the only information we have is that people didn't receive the notice.
Okay.
So if we, if we, for argument's sake, if we look at that as a procedural defect in the process, I don't think that it's, it's a legally fatal procedural defect, because everyone's had notice and an opportunity to be here and still be heard. If council wants to return it to the planning commission for further proceedings, you can do that. I don't think it's mandatory that you do that. That's your call.
I guess, you know, I, I trust our planning commission. They've done excellent work for our city for at least 20 years I've been on council. Councilmember Jackson was a member of the planning commission before she got elected to council, so I think she would agree with me on that. I guess I don't have a problem with kicking it back to the planning commission so that the planning commission folks could hear from these folks that are in opposition. I think they probably made a very good decision, you know, we have this, we have this project that appears to be a good project. Nobody came to show up in opposition. The fact that they may not have known about it might be critical. You know, had they, had you all known about it, I'm assuming you would have showed up to planning commission. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, and I noticed you were referring to the second planning session. I'm not sure whether we were supposed or expected to come to the planning sessions, but we never got to the first one, notice to the first one either. All, all we got was for the hearings.
Yeah, let me clarify that. What I meant was, I heard that you got notice of the first meeting that was then canceled.
It was a hearing like, like this one?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, in fact, it was.
Yes.
And then that, that got rescinded, that notice got rescinded because they, they needed more time to present their case. And we gave them that time. They presented their case, but had, because you didn't know we were having another planning commission meeting, you were unable to present any, any testimony in opposition. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay.
Bill, I'm fine if it goes back to planning commission, that's fine.
All right. So Councilmember Jackson, would you like to restate the motion?
I think, because there are timelines that, that start when an application is filed and a decision has to be made with a certain period of time, it's probably best if you are sending it back to the planning commission to deny the application, and I guess it would be almost like a denial without prejudice, so they can start over at the planning commission level and start the clocks running again, rather than the timer already being run.
Okay, and do you know what that timeline for the planning commission would be? I mean, they generally meet once a month unless they don't have any issues.
It can go back to the, to the planning commission on the existing application. They can just, they can just resubmit it, so they don't have to, to re-prepare anything. We just would have to have time to publish and to get the legal notice out to the residents. I don't, I don't see that being possible for the November meeting, but there'd be no reason it couldn't be on for the December planning commission meeting.
Okay. So you're, you're recommending that we table this motion, send it back to the planning commission, or not even tabling it?
I think it would just be a motion to deny the application with the understanding that it's coming back to be resubmitted.
Okay.
So Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we deny the application for the amendment to the approved master plan for the Sugar Camp and Point Oakwood development affecting the site located at One Russell Place.
Okay, do we have a second for that?
My second.
Do we have any other discussion with Councilmember Jackson or Turbin?
Could I interject before you get too far with it? When, when you deny an application, ordinarily the applicant is barred from resubmitting it for a period of time. I think that needs to be part of your denial, that you, that you're denying it with the understanding that it will be promptly resubmitted.
And we're not setting a timeline on their resubmit, we're just saying they're allowed to resubmit.
Correct.
Okay. You okay with that?
I'm adding that to my motion.
Okay, very good. And your second also applies? All right, well, then I guess at this point, then, you have any other comments? Okay. Lori, would you please call the role on that amended resolution?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Well, we look forward to seeing you back here anytime soon. You're all welcome to come back. Yeah, we'll, we'll let you know. We meet the first Monday of every month, so, yeah, but, all right, well, very good.
Thank you all for coming out.
Thank you very much for your comments, and hopefully we can come to an amicable settlement on this. All right, that concludes our legislation, and Vice Mayor Byington, you're welcome back to the desk.
Thank you.
And what do we have? Oh, yes, we have our Finance Department. Cindy Stafford, CPA, has a very interesting report for us, and I look forward to hearing it after I adjourn for a couple seconds.
Mayor, city council, residents, staff, I appreciate the opportunity to go over the city's finances and kind of update our department. But before I get started, I do want to say happy 35th wedding anniversary to my husband, and we'll celebrate tomorrow night.
Congratulations.
It's today?
It is today.
Look at that dedication. Congratulations.
There we go. There we go. So for this evening's agenda, I'm gonna give a brief discussion of where we are through September 30th versus the budget, some departmental changes. I do want to say that everything that I'm talking about this evening can be found on the city's website under the Finance Department tab, under the monthly financial statements. I also want to point out that the slide, the picture on the slide that I'm showing you is a picture that I took from our boat on Lake Erie, and that happens to be the Lorraine Lighthouse. This year, I was honored to receive the Oakwood Community Service Award from the Oakwood Rotary Club. The club donates $350 on behalf of the recipient to the charity of their choice. I chose the Lorraine Lighthouse Foundation, and I have to say that I've loved that lighthouse since I was a child. I tell people that I own it, and the Historical Society doesn't know it, but I don't think anybody believes me. So we'll start with where we stand, financial. We'll start with general city services, and that includes all of our funds with the exception of our refuse fund, the water fund, sanitary sewer fund, as well as the stormwater fund. So at this point in time, we would expect to be about three-quarters of the way through our budget, and as you can see with receipts, we're slightly above where we would expect to be at this time, and that's really because of two primary sources of revenue, our income tax receipts. We received the bulk of our income tax receipts in April and May because of the April 15th filing deadline, and the other piece is our real estate tax receipts. As property owners, we pay our real estate taxes in February and July. The county remits those to the city in April and September each year, so that's why those two revenue streams are higher at this time of the year. By the time we get to the end of the year, they will tailor down and become more in line with budget. Our dispersments and encumbrances are slightly below where we would expect those to be at this time of the year, but part of that has to do with the fact that some of our projects, we have not done purchase orders and had purchases on those projects, those capital projects, yet. I anticipate that both the general city services dispersments and encumbrances will come very close to budget by the end of the year. I think if our income taxes continue to trend the way they're going, then I think our revenues, our receipts, might be slightly more than budget by the end of the year. Our refuse fund is tracking right where we expect it to be. At this point in time, I expect receipts and dispersments and encumbrances to be right where, right at budget at the end of the year. I don't see anything unusual between now and the end of the year, so I don't think the refuse fund, there'll be any changes from what we anticipate. And my last slide is the water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater combined into one. Our receipts are very close to budget at 74% right now. Our dispersments and encumbrances are slightly below. One of the biggest reasons has to do with our billing for the sanitary wastewater treatment. That third quarter billing usually comes in October, so that's a significant item that's not included at this point in time, and that's one of the items that we don't do a purchase order for. As it comes in, we pay that. And then we have a few capital projects that have not yet seen a purchase order or had purchases on them. But I expect both, or all of the water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater to be very close to budget as we get to the end of the year. And that's kind of a quick where we are at the end of the third quarter, so any questions on where we stand? Oops. We're not done. That's okay.
You didn't say last slide.
I didn't say last slide. Oops, sorry. Any questions on the financial? Any questions on the financials?
What are those, a bunch of question marks? What is that slide?
Just a bunch of question marks?
If you have any questions.
Oh, if I have any questions, okay.
You have any?
No. Thank you.
I'm not. Not moving. There we go. I would like to welcome Barbara Class to our Finance Department. She accepted the position of payroll specialist back in May. Barb has a bachelor's degree in small business management from Miami University, and prior to joining the finance staff, she was at Green County since 2020. But I also want to say that Barb was an administrative specialist from 2003 to 2011 in the United States Army Reserves. We are very excited to have Barb on our staff and on the finance team. And finally, I would like to take this opportunity just to say thank you to council and to the city manager for giving me the opportunity to serve all of you. I'm going to cry. Since June of 2008, I will also be retiring in January of 2025, so this will be my last council presentation. I've thoroughly enjoyed my time with the city of Oakwood and have had an incredible opportunity, worked with some amazing folks, my current staff, Tracy Martin, Linda Merker, Melissa Russell, Barb Class, and Michelle Baker, and I also want to mention those that have retired or left during my tenure, Alice Young, Teresa Rushlow, Sonia Gekki, Tracy Davidson, Helen McCarty, Stacy Vreeland Mathis, Gloria Corona Luna, and Hannah Terry. All of these individuals made my job currently easier and in the past easier, so I thank them as well. As I tell people when I look back on my career, this is kind of the icing on the cake, so I thank all of you.
We're waiting for the last slide.
That's it.
Okay, all right. I understand.
Thank you.
Oh, we're not done with you yet. Go ahead, do you have questions?
No, I just wanted, you said thank you up there, and we're thanking you. I mean, you have done such a phenomenal job. I mean, big shoes to fill. Thank you.
And there's a reason that the Auditor of State comes down here every year to give you the award of excellence that less than 10% of municipal governments, school districts, townships get, and it's because of your leadership skills. I know you've got a great team around you, but as we talk every time, it's the tone of the top in Oakwood, and you are, you are top, top shelf, so we appreciate that. And am I correct that you're going to be rooting for the Cleveland Browns for the foreseeable future?
Well, right now, it's the Indians. Oh, well.
Guardians.
Guardians. They'll always be the Indians.
The Wahoos, the Wahoos.
Yes.
They're on TV right now, too.
Go Tribe.
Yeah, go Tribe.
Well, unfortunately, they lost this afternoon, so.
See, I taped it.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Okay, well, I'll watch the Yankees when I get there.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much, Cindy.
Thanks, Cindy. All you've done.
Okay, it's now time for our city managers' report, and with council's permission, I give him the rest of my unlimited time.
Be careful with that.
Your permission.
Yeah, exactly. I was going to put together like a 48-slide PowerPoint, but I decided not to. I did make a few bullet points, so I don't forget things, but, you know, Cindy is a very special lady, and one thing that she and I share is that we're almost exactly the same age, and so when, as the years have gone on, we've, you know, experienced the same life changes, you know, physically and mentally and, you know, and all that, and we have commiserated a lot during the challenging times, and we've supported one another a lot most, most of the time, the good, all the good times. So I appreciate you more than you know, and I always will. Yeah, this is my last meeting, and I'll try to keep it fairly short here, although everyone that's left are my friends, and I may name them all, I don't know, but thank you, Tom, for your kind, public words, I appreciate it. But the whole thing is bittersweet, for sure. One never knows what life's journey is going to look like, and I've mentioned to a few people, when I took that little multiple-choice exam, which I think back in the day in, you know, Fair Oaks, California, in 1975 or '06, whenever I took it, that was supposed to tell you what your career was maybe going to be and, and maybe what it wasn't going to be. I think I was going to be a plumber or a welder, and nowhere on the chart was local government or government at all, and so it's, it's, life's an incredible journey, and, you know, I could, I could rattle off some forks in the road that have gotten me to this point, but I'll spare you all on that. But I ended up in, in Oakwood and moved in in June of '92 and began on staff here in November of '92, and I'll probably overuse the word blessed, but I've been blessed mightily to both live here and work here for 32 years. Just as you all know, it's a, it's an outstanding community in every measure to live in, and then, you know, to work here has just been a true honor. I've been, during the 22 years as manager, been blessed with two remarkable mayors, Judy Cook, thank you for being here, Judy, the first eight years, and Mayor Duncan, the remaining, and Judy and I have talked a number of times over the years that, I think Judy became mayor, she had already been on council for a number of years, but became mayor right at the exact same time that I became city manager, and I think you said it, Judy, you said, you know, we taught each other how to be, how to do what we did here in the city, and I'll always remember that, and your support along the way, I could speak for hours about, but two wonderful mayors. The city councils I've reported to have been the finest. I, you know, interact obviously with many, many colleagues around the Dayton region, fellow city managers, township administrators and the like, who all, like I, serve an elected body, and, you know, the stories I hear, in fact, you read them in the newspaper from time to time about other communities. I was not exposed to any of that at any point in time during my career here, and, and that was something very special. The staff here has been top shelf. Cindy, Rob, Lori, Ethan, that are here tonight, and, and all the rest over the years, many of which have retired, and, you know, a leader of any organization is only as good as the people that, that they work with, and again, I've been blessed with just a fantastic staff. I'm not going to name my fellow managers, but, you know, I, I will say that my former, how, how's my time? Am I okay? Okay. One of my former pastors, Gary Ikorn, who lived in Oakwood for many years, I'm not sure if Gary still lives here, but 15, 20 years ago, he told me one day that once a month he would get together with fellow pastors in the area, and they would, you know, very confidentially and privately have their discussions, which human beings need to have, and I had that same privilege and honor with colleagues of mine from area, managers from area communities, and, and that's just been a extremely important to me. Dave Fell hired me. Not many people know Dave Fell's name anymore, but he was our third city manager. He was manager here for 30 years, but he was a mentor to me. I've spoken before about Mike Kelly, who was my boss and mentor and truly remarkable person. Dr. John Eastman was my engineering mentor and smartest engineer I ever knew. Sadly, he passed away maybe five years ago, but he taught me everything I know about engineering during those three years I was at LJB. And Jay Weiskircher, who you all know, was my, my rock here, and, you know, when I took over Jay as manager in 2002, Jay had been here already for 10 years, knew the organization, knew the way the city ran, or I'm sorry, 20 years, and just was an enormous support for me as my assistant city manager, particularly, particularly during the early years, but up until the day that he retired at the end of 2017, so really want to publicly thank Jay for everything. And, you know, all right, I'm going to, my daughter Brooke is here, and my wonderful grandsons, Jordan, Lucas, and Andrew, and my porch buddy, Anthony, who lives right next door. And, you know, Tom, Mindy, my neighbor, and Vivian on the other side, she belongs with Amanda, you know Amanda from the Budget Review Committee, John and Joan in the back, my dear, dear friends for so long, and then I'm going to end it here with Debbie because Jay was my rock here at work. My, my real rock is my dear wife Debbie, who, you know, I, I tried many times to not bring work home and to not look at my email at 10:45 at night before I go to bed, only to get aggravated, but I could never accomplish that, and Debbie took the brunt of my getting uptight about things at work, and, honey, thank you for keeping me going all these years. Anyway, I, it's been a great ride, and I've thoroughly enjoyed it, and I could not have asked for a better, again, place to live in or to work for, so, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for our city manager?
Will you reconsider?
We'll save them for November, we'll save them for November 7. We'll do council comments now, and Councilmember Jackson?
Well, I had comments, but I think, I just want to say I've known Norb both as a friend and then by working with the Planning Commission, and I just felt like he, in some ways, really helped cultivate me to be a public servant, so I'll always think of you that way, too, but mostly a friend.
Thank you. Councilmember Turbin?
Thank you, Mayor. I just can't believe this is Norb's last council meeting. You know, I've sat here for four years, and I've been comforted and enjoyed knowing that Norb was at the helm and with his dedication and his leadership, and you will be sorely, sorely missed. You will. Thank you.
Oh, go ahead.
I have another sad event to talk about, though, if you don't mind.
It's your time.
Okay. Well, my husband and I planned a fall getaway last week in the mountains of Asheville, North Carolina, and as you probably know, Hurricane Helene had different plans for us, and you know Asheville was just a disaster. They had torrential rainfall and the massive flooding, and, I mean, they lost everything. They had no power, they had no light, they had no internet, they had no, it was a mess, it really was. And I have a few pictures to show you. You'll see up there, the picture on the left was the entrance to the Biltmore, and Jehuli was the artist that was doing the exhibition, the glass exhibition there, and you can see the water rushing in, and what, what I like to note was the, the street light up above, and you see how high it is. And then the picture on your right is after the water receded. You can see where the watermark was on that, I mean, I just think it was just incredible. My sister actually lives in Nashville, and we couldn't reach her for three days, and it was, it was frightening. It really, really was. You know, I told my husband that we're either the most unlucky couple, both for planning our vacation on this one week out of 100 years, you know, when there's this humongous disaster, or the luckiest, because if we'd gone down one day sooner, we'd probably still be stuck down there. But it really does make you appreciate where you live, and that's really what I want now. You know, I know that we've experienced some wind and rain, and I feel sorry for those people that lost their power. I know what that's like, that's not good, but we really are fortunate to be living in the Miami Valley because we are sheltered from a lot of the bad weather. If you follow the weather, most of the bad stuff comes up from the, the southwest, and what it does is because we're in the valley, it'll ride along the east rim of the valley, and then eventually it'll veer off north, which is Wayzenia, which is up in the northeast of the valley, is the one that gets hit with the tornadoes. So we really are lucky that way. But in addition to that, you know, Dayton has not essentially had any floods since the 1913 flood, the Great Flood, and that's not by chance. I mean, we were so fortunate in Dayton to have these visionary leaders who had the foresight and the wherewithal to go out and hire an engineering firm to put together a flood protection program that includes our, includes our dry dams and miles and miles of levees. And so that's when the Miami Conservancy District was founded, and it has calped us pretty high and dry since then, so we really are very fortunate. And so while Oakwood may not be a destination city, it's still a pretty nice place and a safe place to live here in the Ohio Valley, and there really is no place like home. And just one other thing, if you're interested in the flood protection program, the Miami Conservancy District is having a free tour of one of the dams, the Lockington Dam, on October 16th, and they'll not only let you tour the dam, but they're going to talk about the whole flood protection plan that we have, and I know my husband and I are going, so if you're interested. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor Duncan. Just a couple quick thank-yous with Cindy's last presentation. I have to, I'm sure we'll get you again in January. We'll make you come back because you'll still be employed here, but since you're here, I want to thank you for all your presentations over all these years and everything you've done, and as Mayor Duncan said, the Auditor of State awards, and there's so many things you've done for us, and you're, the best part is, all of your slides have diminished over the years. When I first got on council, there was at least 30 of them. Now, I mean, look at tonight, I mean, it was so nice, so, but you've done a phenomenal job, and I just want to thank you for all you've done, and congratulate you, one of the first to congratulate you on your upcoming retirement, so thank you, Cindy. And when it comes to Norb, I had started to prepare some words, and I realized we have young grandchildren here, and it's going on nine o'clock, so what we're going to do is I'm going to postpone my comments on Mr. Klopch, and I, you know, it's, it is his last meeting, so I can't, you know, just say, "Mr. Byington, your comment." I just want to, you know, thank Norb publicly in this meeting for everything he's done for the city, for the community, and for me as a council member, because, you know, when you're a newly-elected official, if you have no experience, you come in here and your first source is the city manager, it has to be, just the way the system's set up, and he has helped me along the way in more ways than I can imagine, and my job is to look after the citizens and the city, so he's helped me do my job, and I hope we've helped him do his job, and I just appreciate everything you've done, Norb, and congratulations.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Well, as always, Rob always steals my thunder, but, just the positioning of it all, but Cindy, fantastic job over the years. I honestly cannot believe what the mayor is going to do without you. I mean, really, I mean, he, he spends all of his time trying to, and I'm not exaggerating, go through all your reports, trying to find the mistakes, and he never does, and I'm not sure what he's going to do now. He's going to have to take up, what, Sodoku or whatever, something like that, crossword, I don't know, but it's been a great run, and you've made our job extremely easy. As Rob mentioned, being able to put all these facts and figures into a format that is easily understood has really made our job a lot simpler, so I wish you the best in, in retirement, and as Rob said, we'll get you again before you leave. And with Norb, you know, actually, I'm kind of happy you're going, to be honest, unlike everybody else, because I just, I see so much potential of things that you can still do, things that, you know, because of this job and because of the fact that it is so encompassing, it's a 24/7 kind of job, I think that there's opportunities and things that you haven't had that opportunity to do, and I'm excited for your potential to, to be able to do those things, you know, to visit your dad more often, to, to just spend more time with the grandkids and those kind of things. You know, the city is definitely going to miss you, but you put it in good hands, and, you know, we're excited for what you're going to do after you leave, so. As was mentioned, November 7th is the, the big send-off, so please, everybody show up for this. I know he's going to be very uncomfortable, and we want him as uncomfortable as possible, so please be there for that. I did want to say- I did want to say, in what Councilmember Turbin mentioned, you know, we did have the storms through our area, I want to say thank you to our public service folks. You know, as soon as it hit, I was watching trees blow in my front yard, and Norb was already sending us texts about crews being out and working to help people wherever they could, public safety officers out there doing all they could as well, so it's just another testament to the incredible community that we live in, that, you know, as soon as the winds died down and it was safe, people were already starting to clean up. They were helping neighbors do the things necessary to kind of get life back to normal, so, and that's work that never really gets as much credit as it should, but I just wanted to say thank you to all those folks. And then my last comment is, this Sunday, we have the Family Fall Festival. It will be over at Schaefer Park, that is from 2 to 5 o'clock. That's kind of the kickoff of the fall season with Scarecrow Row. The mayor and I will be judging scarecrows again this year. There'll be hayrides, there'll be games for the kids, there'll be a costume contest, family pictures, all kinds of things going on from 2 to 5. So hopefully the weather cooperates for us, and we'll have a beautiful fall day, and just an opportunity for the community to get together and have some camaraderie. Last comment.
Thank you. I'd like to also thank our Public Works Department, because when the storms hit, you know, a week ago Friday, many parts in Oakwood lost power, some got restored sooner than others. I remember after Hurricane Ike came through in 2008, it dawned on me that the difference between civilization and anarchy is about 72 to 96 hours without electricity, and then I hear what Councilmember Turbin described down in Asheville, and it's just, it's just mind-boggling. I will say that our Public Works people did an outstanding job, but sometimes, you know, when you have downed power lines, that's not their job. Their job is to call AES and get them out here. And by and large, you know, I didn't think this necessarily in Hour 72, that they did, they, by and large, did a pretty good job. I will say, if anybody from AES is watching us in our council meeting tonight, when it was DPNL, they used to spy on us, didn't they? And they'd go up the flagpole if anybody made any complaints about DPNL. Their communications to local governments that are trying to respond to the citizens saying, when are we gonna get our power back, leaves quite a bit to be desired. I would encourage them, in addition to figuring out, you know, how to get power back sooner, is communicate with the elected officials or the staff of the elected officials, so they can communicate to their citizens. If you know what's, they'll wait if they believe what you're telling them. And I got a little frustrated, not for my own property, but for some other folks, that we had, we had some people that, you know, we had a, we had a downed power line and a tree on Shance, and it took them five days to get that renewed, and there was a neighbor that had lost power, they had a child with type 1 diabetes that needed electricity to run the devices that keep him alive, and they had to relocate, I think they went to Westchester, where they had family, and, you know, we have a lot of people that have similar situations, so AES, if you're out there listening, spend a little time in local government communications, that would be my suggestion to you. As we said, Norb, I have plenty of comments, I'm going to, I'm going to save most of them because I think I might be able to out-talk you on November 7. I know it's gonna be hard, but I'm practicing, and he really does not like the limelight, he wants to slink out the back door, and I understand that his wife Debbie has something that's really sort of unique, it's called a job jar, and you put all these little projects in there. It's a book, okay, okay. I was going to buy you a golden screwdriver so you could fix all the things at your house that need to be fixed, but I wish you well, I know you're gonna have a good time. I know you don't want to play golf, I was gonna give you my golf clubs, because I'm terrible at golf, and it'd be something you could probably do better than me, but we'll, we will miss you, and we have several other things that he and I get to deal with here in the next 30 or so days, and I guess I will leave it at that. Is that okay? Is that okay? So our next meeting is Monday, November 4. That will be the first meeting for our new city manager, and we look forward to her, and I think I got Norb's commitment to come and sit in the back row, you know, just to make sure how she does, so, or something like that. Okay, we're adjourned.